I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 23 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Will you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Father, the Holy Spirit, the saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is unanticipated. We received late because of a mix up in communications, a request for the... I'm writing to request your permission for the Rodman Ride for Kids to pass through the town of Middleborough when our 23rd Annual Rodman Ride for Kids, non-competitive cycling event, takes place on September 28, 2013. They anticipate raising over $11 million for at-risk kids throughout the state. The concerns, they're hitting quite a few of the, well, a couple of the heavy traffic Their ride is on the 28th, so this is coming to us tonight late. I would entertain a motion to approve pending review with both police and fire chiefs.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Also, Jackie, would you send them a note that we want them to police up their area after they're done with the race? Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clark.
So this ride's coming through on the 28th?
Yeah.
So...
But I don't think they're going to be in the area that the walkers will be for the... We have a...
St. Vincent de Paul.
St. Vincent de Paul, but that's on the 29th. 28th is Saturday. My mistake. So they shouldn't be, they're still straggling around by then. Probably have to help. Whoops, sorry. This is Miss calls. Any other board members have anything under unanticipated?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fraley.
I apologize for talking about this under unanticipated, but there was no other way to address it. This came to my attention on Friday afternoon about 4:30, so there was no way I could get in touch with anybody. But I was called by a resident who asked me if I knew anything about Scooby snacks. And to be quite honest with you, I said, "No, I don't know anything about this stuff." She explained to me a little bit about what it was, and I did some research, and she asked me if I knew of any stores in Middleborough who were selling this. What this is, is this is a synthetic cannabinoid. Basically, it's a designer drug. What they do, what the company does is they take a plant product and they spray it with chemicals. They market it as an incense. They market it to children. Children buy it and they smoke it like it's weed or marijuana, and they can get very, very sick from it. This particular brand, Scooby snacks, there are another other names regarding this, but was recently banned in Taunton. Keeping that in mind, I spoke to a friend of mine who serves on the city council in Taunton, Dave Portier. He sent me information regarding their ordinance that they passed quite recently. Using that as a blueprint, I read through that. I forwarded that to our health agent, Jean Spalding, and I asked her if we could come up with a draft ordinance, health, Board of Health ordinance or bylaw to ban the sale of this product in the town of Middleborough because it's a poison and it's marketed towards children. I don't know if you can see this anywhere, but it's got a picture of Scooby Doo on the package. My three-year-old daughter watches Scooby Doo. She doesn't understand that this is a poison. So by talking with our health agent, with our state rep, two state reps, Representative Colton, Representative Oral, the police chief has been, I've been in touch with the police chief and the fire chief as well, trying to get some more information about this, but the most, the most information I got was oddly enough from the Center of Disease Control website and the National Institute on Drug Abuse. Michael Swartz, a co-author of a report, says, "Synthetic cannabinoids are not safe alternatives to marijuana. They are unexpected and unpredictable health problems that can occur. The availability of synthetic cannabinoid products, coupled with how rapidly the chemicals present and the various products change, really creates a recipe for public health disaster." I think it's extremely important that we get in front of this as soon as possible. And with that, I'd like to read one more thing. Synthetic cannabinoids may precipitate psychosis, and in some cases, it may be prolonged. Some studies suggest that synthetic cannabinoid intoxication is associated with acute psychosis, worsening of previously stable psychotic disorders, and may trigger a chronic long-term psychotic disorder among vulnerable individuals, such as those with a family history of mental illness. There are also studies that I have from Colorado that have a, had 75 people hospitalized last year who reported smoking a form of synthetic marijuana. Not only does it drive you, well, induces a state of psychosis, but it also shuts your kidneys down. When you go to the hospital after smoking this and you're passed out and your kidneys are shutting down, the people in the emergency room don't understand what's going on because you're out like a light. You can't tell them that you smoked some Scooby snacks. I personally feel that this is a health emergency, if you will, in our town, and I'd like to, if we can, give our blessing to the health agent in drafting a bylaw and passing this as soon as possible banning the sale of this in our town. Once that's done, I'd like to share that information, all our information and our bylaw, with every surrounding community that we can, because it doesn't do us any good to ban it in our town if it's available in the next town over. It's been, it's against the law federally, certain forms of it, but the federal government has instituted a way that we can prosecute it on a state level. So I think the fastest and best way we can address this right now is on a local level as a Board of Health.
Okay, and I think we have to have a hearing on that, so...
Let's schedule it.
We could probably, maybe September 30th. Can you pull together something by September 30th?
I haven't yet.
I've provided a draft, and it just has to be finalized, cleaned up where there's to add some additions to it, and then I'll run through the term he's called on the state level and through our local boards.
Why don't we schedule a hearing for the, it's probably 8 o'clock on September 30th?
September 30th is too busy. I have no qualms at all about meeting earlier solely for this hearing.
There's work that has to be done before we...
I understand that. This needs to be done as soon as possible. I understand that.
We'll do that, we can do that September 30th. That's a week away.
Okay.
All right.
On this same topic, if I may, Mr. Chair, what these stores are doing right now, selling this product, is not illegal. That doesn't make it right. What I'm doing is if I go into a convenience store or if I go into a gas station, is I'm asking them if they sell Scooby snacks. If they say yes, I leave. I'm asking every member of this board and every member of the town of Middleborough to do the same. I spoke to an owner of one of the stores that sells it today. He explained to me that he was doing this because it was economically viable to him. If he didn't sell this stuff, he was going to lose business. Well, I think if he's going to sell this stuff, he should lose business. So I would ask each and every person who has a loved one out there who might be vulnerable to this, to ask that question when you go into a convenience store or a gas station. Do you sell this stuff? And if they say yes, walk out and take your business elsewhere. They don't deserve our money. This is our community, and they're putting poison into it. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything under unanticipated?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just a quick comment on this.
On this?
Yes, if I may.
Quick.
Okay, very quick. They're selling it, as Selectmen Fraley showed you, with those cartoon packages in flavors like grape, apple, and watermelon, so kids might think it's candy. It's also been linked in Michigan and Washington to violent behavior and murders by the people that have smoked it, the kids that have smoked it, heart failure, and it's extremely hard to track because it does not show up in the system like in a drug test, so the faster we can get it out of this town, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything under unanticipated? Okay.
Dr. Moise has something.
Yes, please.
Good evening. As the superintendent of schools, I was contacted today, and of course, representing the children of our school district, I certainly support anything we can do to keep things safer. I did check with middle and high school principals to see whether they have heard anything about this. Thankfully, we haven't seen anything. Certainly, students are talking about it, and hopefully, that will be all that they do, but I just wanted to come to the meeting this evening to support keeping Middleborough safe for all of our children and all of our residents, and anything we can do to go forward in this vein, we totally support. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Announcements and recognitions. Any announcements?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Knowles.
I just received information that the Department of Public Health has approved 158 of the 181 applications for marijuana dispensaries in Massachusetts. Phase two is now beginning. Of the 16 applications that were made for Plymouth County, 12 of them are able to proceed to phase two. Four of them were denied, so we can be, we can expect them to start seeking community approval within the next few weeks.
Okay. Anybody else? Any announcements in the audience?
I'll prevent your Veterans Agent. Just a couple of things coming up in the month of October. The Women's Veterans Memorial Committee is having a spaghetti supper at the VFW starting at 5:00. Tickets are $10. They can be picked up at the Middleborough Acupuncture, and that's, they're planning to put a woman's memorial in the Veterans Memorial Park. Also, with the Middleborough Veterans Memorial Park, they're having their Taste of Middleborough event on the 16th of October from 7:00 to 9:00, and tickets can be picked up at Maria's. $15 apiece, table of 10 for 150. So, upcoming events. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other? One to minutes? Minutes for the September 16th meeting?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or corrections? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention. Thank you. A new business. We have to have a joint meeting with the CPA committee relative to appointing Ted Ayers and Michael Madigan to the CPA committee as Citizens at Large for a two-year term effective 9/1913 through 6/3015. CPA committee is all present?
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
I think you skipped over the warrant, just to sign the warrant.
I'd make a motion to authorize the chairman or as designated to sign the warrants pending 9/2013.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much, Jackie. Appreciate that. I'm sure they'll appreciate it when they get their paychecks. Okay, so, we have a joint committee, joint meeting with the CPA committee relative to appointing Ted Ayers and Michael Madigan to the CPA committee as Citizens at Large for two-year terms effective 9/1913 through 6/3015. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jane Loaks, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, and the bylaw calls for us to, to meet, for you to meet with the permanent members of the committee. A majority are here. Actually, we are missing a planning board representative at the moment, so everyone on the committee who's supposed to be here is here.
Okay, and you have a majority present for voting purposes?
Yep.
Okay. And your pleasure is to vote Mr. Madigan and Mr. Ayers to the CPA committee as delegates at large?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or questions from you people about that? No? Comments or questions from the board? No? Okay.
So then, I would ask, should we have a single motion, or how?
Well, why don't we, why don't you people vote? We will vote.
Okay, then I'd ask for a motion from my committee. Second. All in favor?
Excuse me?
Opposed?
Excuse me? Could I just get the names of who's making the motion?
Um, yeah.
Here you go.
And the other, the other statutory member other than myself is Janet Miller.
Okay, what are we motioning, who are we appointing first? Reappointing?
Reappointing Ted Ayers and Michael Madigan.
Are you going to do both in one?
Yeah.
Do you want to take them one at a time?
We can do it that way, if you want, or you can do it unanimous, whatever you want. We have, no, they can do both, they can do both people, that's fine. Do you understand how you want to do the vote? If you want to do a roll call, or?
No, it's just unanimous.
Okay.
Did you have your vote? Okay. For the Board of Selectmen. Comments or questions?
Make a motion that we reappoint Ted Ayers and Michael Madigan to the CPA committee as Citizens at Large for two-year terms effective 9/1913 through 6/3015.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. You're in. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item. That was it? The next item on the agenda is to vote to reappoint Laura O'Connell as the Commission for Disability, to the Commission for Disability, for a three-year term effective 10/1713 through Any comments or questions? Is Laura available? Is she here? No?
We ask Judy Bigelow Costin, Office of Disability, we ask that we get Diane Stewart as a new member.
Is that, that'll be, that's coming down. That's two votes away. Where on it?
I'm not hearing the vote.
Oh. Okay, so representing, yeah, concerning Laura O'Connell. Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we have a vote to reappoint Michelle McClellan to the Commission on Disability for a three-year term effective 10/12/13 through 6/3016.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any comments or questions? Is Michelle available? Is she here? That's you. Anything you'd like to say?
No.
No? Okay. Hearing no other comments or questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we have a vote to appoint Diane Stewart as a member of the Commission on Disability, filling the vacancy caused by the resignation of Alan Edwards effective 9/23/13 through 6/3015.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Diane, I presume you are willing to accept this position? Okay, thank you. Okay, pleasure, hearing, having a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have a vote to reappoint Mark Mobley, Adam Pelletier, and Charlie Cristello to the Permanent Cable Committee for a three-year terms effective 6/3013 through 6/3016.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
Moved.
Motion, we have a motion and a...
Second.
Second? Okay. Comments or questions? Mark Adam, Mark or Adam here? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have a vote to reappoint and appoint to the Middleborough-Lakeville-Haring Fishery Commission as presented, and that would be... Okay, we're talking the volunteer observers first. That would be Harold Atkins, Mike Barnardsky, Ellen Fraley, Cynthia, well, we can't really vote for somebody for Wareham, can we?
Yes, we can.
Cynthia Jedron, Joseph Yubansky, who's from Lakeville, and Sylvester Zlinch...
Zinkowitz.
What?
Zinkowitz.
Zinkowitz, yes, from Lakeville.
Motion to, well, actually, I can't, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Not yet. Pardon me?
He has, make a motion.
Yeah. So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second, ma'am.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
One abstention.
Okay, now, we, one abstention. We have a new appointment. Tara Womato? Womato?
Ewamoto.
Ewamoto.
Ewamoto, from Lakeville.
Motion to approve?
Second.
They never said I was going to have to pronounce all this up yet. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we have a reappointment for fish wardens for a three-year term ending September 30th 2016. That would be Sergeant Johnson and David Lemo.
So moved.
Motion and a...
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to take a moment. We just appointed a dozen or more people to various committees, volunteers, and I'd like to thank all those people for stepping up and getting involved in the community. I know some of them are reappointments, some are new, but, you know, the town can't run without people stepping up and doing this kind of work, and it's appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles. I second that. That's sincere vote of confidence in all these people. They do a lot of work, a lot of volunteers in this town do a lot of work, and people don't know about it. And it's a great thing. Now, we have a vote to approve the extension request for the fiscal year 2010 CDBG block grant until March 2014, and to authorize the chairman to sign the extension request form. So moved. Do you want to address this, Jim?
Yes, good evening. Jane Cudsey, the Office of Economic and Community Development. The current 2010 CDG, CDB, I can't even say it, CDBG block grant, Community Development Block Grant, is due to end in September 30th. I'm requesting that we extend the date, the end date to March of 2014 in order to, March 2014, in order to be able to access program income funds. Program income funds are funds that from prior housing rehab projects, we give loans to people to repair their homes, and then in turn, they pay them off, and we use those program income for DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development-approved projects. So in order to be able to access these funds, we need to have the grant extended.
How often, how, how long can we extend the grant?
Um, I, I don't really know how long. I've already talked to the DHCD, and they've approved, they've said it's fine for us to go until March 2014. I originally had asked for it to be extended to January to get us through the winter, but the DHCD said, "Go ahead and apply for it through March to cover any emergency grants if we have funds permitting."
Okay. Thank you. All right, any comments or questions? Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Vote to authorize the chairman to authorize town manager to sign a FEMA grant in the amount of $138,523.13.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is from Hurricane Sandy, so this is, our fire chief has gone out there again and driven quite a bit of money into our town from gathering all that information and keeping accurate records and getting the money back into the town, so that's, that's a tremendous little shot in the arm for us, and that's a great thing that the fire chief does. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have a vote to approve the 13th Annual Middleborough High School Homecoming Parade on Saturday, October 12th, at 12 noon, and Root... Root's the same, I think they said the Root is the same as last year?
Mm-hmm. From the high school to bad school.
There you go. All right, any comments or questions? Anybody would like to speak to this? Okay, this is, the fire chief and police chief have no objection to this, pending, making sure that they don't have any barricades, or if they do, they're movable. That's about the only thing. Okay, pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Vote to approve the Second Annual 4H 5K Run-Watt fundraiser on Saturday, October 12th, at 9:00 AM. They plan on being around the precinct area, Thompson Street, and returning to the clubhouse back there, over on Thompson Street. Again, this is with the blessing of the police and fire chiefs, as long as they don't have any barricades up, and if they do, they're movable, and of course, that they police up their areas afterwards if there's any refuse left behind. Comments or questions? The pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Capital Planning Committee's here, so we are now going to take a look at the Articles 8, 9, and 8, 9, 10, and 11 for the special town meeting warrant. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Article 8, yeah, is for new guns for the police department. I don't know if they've been in to talk to you yet, have, has he? Okay, I'm sure. Are you going to be doing the articles again?
Yeah.
To review them all?
Yeah, we have a hearing, I believe.
Okay, great. Well, anyway, to get to the gist of it, the police chief is recommending the purchase of .59 45 caliber firearms, which, and also the required holsters, magazines, pouches, and ammunition to train and outfit all the offices. They would also trade in the 2003 40 caliber. This all stems from the situation back a couple of months ago when there was gunfire on, I believe, Highland Street, and they realized their guns are not strong enough to drop someone from 60 feet, and their research revealed that the nationwide trend is to have 45 calibers, including the state police, the sheriffs, MBTA, in most police departments. And he can, you know, get into this further with you, but the total cost is $38,548 with a trade-in value of $21,805, bringing the total cost is $16,743, and that includes... the fifty-nine Glock forty-five caliber guns, the holsters, the ammunition, the pouches, but they believe after review, um, that their guns are not, um, state-of-the-art. And the Capital Planning Committee voted unanimously to support the funding. If you have any questions, I'll do the best I can, but any specific questions, I would save for the, uh, police chief.
Questions or comments from the board?
The chief did come into our, to the Capital Planning Committee meeting, and he made a nice presentation, and he brought his, one of his firearms instructors, who has a fair amount of experience with firearms, he came in and explained it, you know, pretty clearly to us, and, uh... I think our police should be as well armed as the next police force, and when, uh, when you hear a story about a police officer hitting a guy three times, and it takes three bullets to drop a guy, you have a tendency to go with the large firearm the next time.
Right.
So, that was, uh, I thought the police chief did a great job in his, uh, firearms instructor, I can't remember his name.
AJ LaPam.
He did a great job as well, so, uh, yeah, we unanimously approved it at the Capital Planning Committee.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to support.
Motion to support.
Second.
Article number eight.
All right, motion to support, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article nine.
By the way, Article eight would be from Free Ca-, all of these are from Free Cash, um, the three articles.
Okay.
Um, the Article nine is a twenty-passenger special needs van for the high school, it is not a wheelchair lift, as, as indicated in the article, and it does not include a new maintenance vehicle for the school department, I believe that's gonna come out of their budget. So this is a fifty-thousand-dollar, um, van that will replace a two thousand and one, um, current van, and it's twenty-passenger, non-wheelchair lift, they, last year, they got a wheelchair lift, we put this one off in the spring, um, until, until this fall town meeting.
Comments or questions? Pleasure of the board?
Motion to support Article nine.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Article ten is, we've voted to postpone, it's for the bridge, um, the entrance to the high school, the, the bridge structure, which is in rough shape, but was checked out by an engineering firm, it's, uh, safe for pedestrians, no longer are they allowed to, uh, back trucks on it, they've done some, um, unloading on that dock, I guess it's easier to do that than, uh, than to bring it in somewhere else, um, but it's safe for pedestrians, we would like to postpone this until the spring, they're applying for some, uh, school billing, um, authority funding, and if they get that, and they've included, then it would be foolish to spend money now and find out we've got some funding in the spring that will replace that whole bridge or part, so we'll see what happens in the spring, they should know by March or April. If the funding doesn't come through then, then we may come back to you, yeah, for the, um, annual town meeting to shore, either shore that up or replace it, to shore it up is forty-five thousand, to replace the whole thing, we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars, so we're gonna just sit tight, we know it's safe for pedestrians, doesn't look pretty, but it's safe, and we'll sit tight, um, until the springtime, so we, we're asking to postpone that.
Are they gonna put some bollards out there or something to prevent people from backing onto that bridge, is there a way to block that off so people can't rap onto it?
Well, it's, it's just the school department and stuff, so they know.
Oh, they, oh, okay, so it isn't somebody else?
I don't believe so.
Bringing any, it's just school department, okay, all right. Okay, um, pleasure of the board?
Motion to support, uh, actually, I don't think we make a motion, because we're not gonna...
No, they postponed, that's postponed, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself. Okay, then Article eleven?
Article eleven, uh, the, these are, um, computer-related, software and hardware, um, articles, or, in article that we put off in the spring, we did some funding in the, uh, spring town meeting, the annual town meeting, we put some of this off, um, and I have asked our, uh, two experts to come in there here, if you have any questions, from the, the school IT, um, Ellen, and the, uh, town IT, Tara, the, uh, as you can see, do you have the, uh, did you get a copy of?
No.
Okay, well, we'll get you those copies, it's a total of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents. Fifty thousand dollars is going to be offset by the Pierce trustees, bringing the total down to seventy thousand, three sixty-three, twenty. It includes hardware for the, um, the police department, the library, that, the hardware totals eighty-four thousand, seven fifteen, this is before the Pierce deduction, and the software, um, again, upgrades for the library, um, the, um, GIS, et cetera, and I'll have, and if you have any questions, I'll have the experts get into more detail on that, total's thirty-five thousand, six forty-eight, so the total coming to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, three sixty-three, minus the fifty thousand from Pierce trustees, but, um, if you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to yield.
We've, we've done, now, this is the third year we've had the Capital Planning Committee doing the?
Yes.
And every year, we've put a lot of money into computers. Are we, are we like halfway through the program, or is there, is there any kind of a milestone as to how far we are along in, in replacing, replacing, replacing all of our old equipment?
The problem with technology is expensive, and as you know, it changes all the time, but what we're talking about upgrading is, when we talk about the, uh, the Asher computers, they're replacing some very old police equipment, there's twenty-five of them that are, from my understanding, uh, at least ten years old.
Are these the cruiser laptops they replace?
No, laptops aren't, we have two laptops in here, the rest, no, they're all workstations.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And in terms of the software piece, that goes for the, um, GIS system, there's three pieces to that, um, basically to develop standards for it, um, the other place is to, um, do the automatic updates on the data onto the website, and, um, there's another piece to it, oh, the configuration of it for both the school and the town, so, um, and there's network pieces, and the network, um, actually, we've gone out and looked at it, um, we got a quote for upgrading the network here, and we would, we have a five-year plan where we're going to put that in, so, uh, the only thing I can tell you about technology is upgrade the network, we wanna start the process now, but upgrade it to, um, uh, to gigabit, uh, let me see, I'm just trying to find it where it is, oh, uh, upgrade to ten gigabits to the switches, okay, so, um, so we're trying to increase the bandwidth, doing the same thing on the school side, so that things are slower, makes people more efficient, they're not waiting for the computer to come on, and, uh, have to walk away, go hit a couple of clocking, come back and do their work, so, I wish I could tell you it's gonna end, um, but in terms of technology, it just doesn't stop.
No, I know, technology is, you, we don't, the, the town doesn't have enough money to keep up with the technology changes.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
But I know that there's, for years, there's been a lot of equipment that's been, you know, really, you know, really old.
Right, and that's what we're replacing with this one.
Are we getting through that, are we getting through most of that equipment now?
That we are working on, on doing that, um, and not having the history, I just know from what we're looking at right now, it's the police department that this focus was on.
Okay.
And we do have a five-year plan that's addressing the network, and that's in the capital plan that we addressed to them.
Okay, very good. Any comments or questions from the board? No? Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to support Article eleven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and that's gonna come out of Free Cash, and how much is that, but?
The total will be seventy thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents, that's what the article reads, because fifty of that is...
Plus fifty that's from there, plus the fifty from the, uh, Pierce trustee, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next item is Article twenty-two. This is, uh, to zone, uh, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws for the purpose of regulating the locations of registered marijuana dispensaries by adding the new use, uh, to the table of uses in section thirty, uh, three-point-one subsection D, commercial uses, so that the new use is permitted in the general use GU district by special permit of the Board of Appeals, but not otherwise, and that the bylaw reads as follows, and there's a chart, or act anything thereon. Pleasure of the board?
Motion to support Article twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
On, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Fraley?
We have a planning board meeting tomorrow night, are we gonna make a recommendation to the planning board to ask them to, uh, amend this article by adding the GUX?
Yes.
District?
Yes, but, uh, what I, my, my thought was, we will approve this, and then we will vote on making a motion to support adding the GUX. So, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, I would entertain a motion to allow the chair, I will be at the meeting tomorrow night, to, uh, present a recommendation to, to add in the GUX district to this amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? And the reason for that, of course, is to add that whole section of Route one twenty-eight, yeah, Route twenty-eight.
About the one.
South of, uh, put it in Milton, that's, south of four ninety-five down to the Rochester Line, to add that whole area, uh, into this district. Okay, having, having explained that poorly, but explained it, and, um, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article, uh, Mr. Fraley, can you take over for a few moments?
Sure. Article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to accept MGL, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five-L, upon acceptance of this section by a municipality, and notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter to the contrary, any taxes due under this chapter by a member or dependent of a member of the Massachusetts National Guard or Reservis shall be deferred while that member is on active ser-, service outside the Commonwealth for the next one hundred and eighty days after that service. No interest or penalties shall be assessed for any period before the expiration date of those hundred and eighty days, or any act thereon. Mr. Provincia?
President LaBarber addresses the Assessor, more familiar with these things.
Thanks. Actually, this came about, um, because we had a serviceman that was overseas, had thought he had someone that was going to take care of paying his tax bill for him while he was gone, and that did not happen, and he got charged penalties and interest in that. What this will allow is that someone that is in the National Guard or Reservis, if they are stationed overseas, they can come back into Middleboro, you know, come back home, and they have six months to pay their tax bill, it's not costing the town anything, all it does is just defers any, um, payment, and then does not, you know, allow the town to have to collect, um, you know, penalties and interest. I did talk with our deputy collector, he already does that, um, if somebody has, regardless of what type of bill it is, if they are overseas, he will waive his bill.
And in reality, this would affect probably less than ten people per year for the community.
I personally think they have enough to worry about if, if, not here.
Absolutely.
I have a question, just so I can clarify here, this is, these are just deployments, oh, the, it says outside the Commonwealth.
These, these would be deployments as opposed to your, um, initial active duty for training and those kinds of things.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Montepurt?
Hey there, Glenn Montepurt, Marion Road, just to be clear, this is for all branches of the national, all branches of the armed forces?
Uh, Mass-, Massachusetts National Guard and Reservis, if they're allowed.
And the answer to that would be, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have the Army, the Army National Guard, the, uh, the Marine Reserve, the Army Reserve, the Navy Reserve, so it would encompass, uh, all branches of the service.
All right. Entertain a motion?
Motion to recommend Article twenty-three.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, man, passes man.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Where are we?
Article thirty.
Article thirty? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of certain real estate on the northerly side of Wareham Street, and being part of Lot eight, seven, two, on Assessor's Map fifty-eight D, and being sometimes known as Thomas Memorial Park, from the Municipal Light Board Gas and Electric Commission, to the Board of Selectmen, Park Commission, or other town board, for the same purpose as the real estate is currently used for, such real estate consisting of two-point-six-nine acres of land, more or less, and being bounded southerly by Wareham Street, westerly by the chain-link fence, located easterly of the main building at the Wareham Street Electric Station, northerly by Lot eight, two, eight, on Assessor's, Assessor's Map fifty-eight D, and easterly, in part by the Nemasket River, and in part by land shown as Lot one sixty-eight on the Assessor's Map fifty-eight D, or any act, or any act, anything thereon. Okay? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Crowley, I'm the general manager of the Gas and Electric Department.
So you're giving us the dam, aye, yeah?
Well, we talked to town council about the best way to handle this, and he had suggested that this would be the best course, uh, we had a concern, because we've reduced staffing so that we don't have employees available to maintain the site, we also have stepped up the, the perimeter fencing, the cameras for the electric yard, and our requirements for reliability and security are at a higher degree now, so we have to maintain all of our staffing within that perimeter twenty-four-seven, and a number of the positions that in the past might have been available now are backup to the station operators who have to be on the job twenty-four-seven, so we just don't any longer have the ability to maintain or monitor this property.
All right, so that is the Thomas Park, that's the herring run area, and the dam. Okay, any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Lemo.
Jackie, what, what has historically been the maintenance that's performed by the GNE for this?
We had one staff person who was our second maintenance person, who retired a few years ago, he had maintained the property, at that time, we had the two maintenance workers, we also weren't under nearly stringent regulations on the way that we have to monitor and, uh, secure our electric facilities, uh, so when he retired, the GNE no longer had staffing available to do it, and could only do it very infrequently, so that I understand that there's a group of, uh, residents who have taken it on themselves to honor the, the goal of Thomas Memorial Park, uh, to, um, maintain that, the herring run, the facility, the grass, the plantings, and apparently, there was a fund that had been established at some point that the GNE never had anything to do with, so it, it seems as though there was some way to maintain that separate from the GNE. I think that it ended up in the GNE's hands originally, because a very long time ago, it was thought that the river could be used to generate electricity, we no longer have those facilities and haven't in any, the memory of any employees, um, so that it, it just doesn't make sense for us to have a waterway outside of our fence.
But is this, uh, this volunteer group that's been doing the grass and things like that, are they interested in continuing, or is this something we would turn over to the DPW?
I think it's something that the, you, someone needs to coordinate it, but as I understand it, there were... it, there were articles in the Middleborough Gazette, this group of citizens came together when we started discussing this issue in the spring and in the summer, and, but it would be better if it were coordinated through a town department.
Okay, thank you.
A couple of things about this, the park that we commonly refer to as the herring the herring commission has nothing to do, as the one of the commissioners says, you only, it's only under their purview if it's wet. They don't have the ability to actually mow the lawn. It's a town park. We shouldn't ask a GNE employee, or the rate payers in Middleborough and Lakeville, to pay for the maintenance of a town in Middleborough Park. I would certainly like to see it, after it's turned over to the Board of Selectmen, turned right over to the Parks Department, because it's a town park. It just makes perfect sense to me that way. That way, if this group of volunteers wants to take care of it, they can, but if something happens and it disperses, we can call up the Parks Department and say, can you mow the lawn? It's just, I don't know how something so simple gets so complicated.
Government.
Government. But I certainly appreciate all the work on behalf of the GNE to help get this resolved because it's been years.
Well, we would love to get it off of our plate, we've got plenty right now.
Right. So I just want to thank you to the GNE, and to the GNE commissioners for their help in this.
The other board member?
Mr. Chair, has someone spoken to the Parks Department, to Brian Cass, about taking this over?
I think he's been involved in some of the discussions.
And it's within his purview, no problems?
It also makes a lot more sense to have a
Well, it does, yeah.
A middleboro teenager making whatever it is, an hour mowing the lawn there rather than a gentleman who works for the GNE, who I'm going to guess is making a little bit more than a teenager in the summertime.
Good guess.
Okay, that's all.
Quell?
Fine, great idea.
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion, please?
You may, sir.
Please ask the board, the Park Department, as a member of the Park Department Commission, I'd like to ask if you would please ask the board to come in and make a discussion on this, before you just say that the Park Department takes responsibility. I'd like to know when it became a Park Department park, per se, a year that, you know, it became a park.
Okay.
Okay? Because, is it actually part of the Park Department?
Well, not yet. We haven't decided that yet. And that would be, there's a decision, and it sounds, you know, it sounds like a reasonable place to go.
It does. It sounds like a very reasonable way to go.
But it doesn't mean it's done yet, because there's two sides to any argument, and naturally you would want to have the other piece, the other party in.
I understand that, and I understand where Jackie comes from also.
Right.
I'm just saying that due to the number of acreage in the town of Middleborough, and the responsibilities of the Park Department, we just need to come to terms on things.
But it, but in the reality of this, this is 2.69 acres, but a lot of that you can't touch. You know, you go out in the river and you try to pull a weed, oh dear God, they'd be parachuting down with them, the DEA and everybody else would be coming in after you, so. So there's a lot, you know, the real park area is a very small area there.
I understand that, I'm not saying no, you know, I'm only one person, I'm just asking that you call all of us in.
And we're not always draconian, so we we would invite you in to
Thank you.
Here. So we can hear you are part of it. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, name is Brian Jimononian. As I read through this article, the one question I have is, will the Board of Selectmen, the Park Commission, or some other board get this? And the answer is probably yes, because that's how it's worded, but which one will happen? Because what happens is, and I've run into this in this town, is ambiguity is a bad thing. When you say it's going to go to some department, but you don't specify it will go to the Board of Selectmen, who then you guys, once you guys have it, you can do whatever you want with it, but if it goes to Board of Selectmen, Park Commission, or other town board, it's ambiguous as to who's going to have care, custody, and control. And I run into what happened in 1932 with the Purse Playground, that whole piece of property, we still don't know who has care, custody, and control, because in the 50s it all got jumbled up. And I don't know if I own, as a school committee member, I have control of Battersfield, or if the Park Department does, but I know a bunch of us collect rent on it, so I just, one of the things I'd clear up is, in that article, is either take it or give it to the Park Commission or whoever, but there's three potential entities, one being other town board, one of them should get it and take the ambiguity out of it, so that way we know you guys have the care, custody, and control.
Well, when there's an ambiguity, I think it always falls to us. Starts with us. They can't, GNE can't give it to anybody else, they have to give it to the town, the town is us, for the start.
But, right, I mean, I'm just looking at it, when you give it in the town article, the town is actually, you're not the town, we give the authority to you to do certain things, but we are the town, the town says, if we approve this, it would be Board of Selectmen, Park Commission, or other town board, so technically we would be giving it to whoever we wanted to. And that's why I was saying, in the past, this has been an issue, and I'm still trying to find out the answer.
Well, all right, but this isn't 1932, nor is it 1950, and this board, for the past five, six years, has been pretty proactive about addressing issues, not taking on something and then sticking it in the closet. So we will, we will resolve this, it's not going to
That was my comment, sir.
You aren't going to be coming back to this board 35 years from now, saying, you know, back in 2013, they forgot to tell somebody.
If it were voted the way it was written.
I'm pretty sure he will be doing exactly the
I know. Well, the problem is, is what happens if that does become a piece of parcel of land that somebody wants to get their hands on, or for whatever reason, or somebody says nobody can use it at this point because it's under the care, custody, and control of this whatever board it got put under. But what I'm saying is, is somebody could come in and say, the Park Commission has it because that's what it said in the article, and it is a separate entity, so.
Except the Park Commission just said they didn't.
No, 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 they, but that's what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm just trying to clarify it before we get in
That's good.
There, that was all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Couldn't we just say to be determined by this Board of Selectmen? Then, is that what it pretty much says?
I think that's what it already says, doesn't it? Everything comes to us. Starts with us. Like it or not, all of these
I think we could ask Charlie if we could clean that up a little bit.
I don't know, because we've already, we'd have to, we'd have to amend it. We could, all right.
Yeah, we can ask, and if need be, we can amend it at town meeting, on the floor of town meeting.
Okay.
But I would make a motion to support Article 30.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 31, see if the town will vote to authorize the Municipal Light Board Gas and Electric Commission to acquire by gift on behalf of the town easements for the transmission of gas and electric service in private ways off North Street known as Pierce Lane and Western Ave, or any act thereon. Good evening.
Good evening.
More maps.
Bernie can go into more detail, but basically, we need to
Thank you, sir.
upgrade and maintain all of our gas distribution facilities under state and federal regulations, and this is part of our routine upgrade, but Bernie, in the process of doing all of his paperwork, realized that we didn't have easements for these two private roads, and so in order to retire 1950's vintage cast iron pipe, we need to acquire the easements so we can upgrade them to meet modern standards.
As Jackie was saying, if you look on the, I don't know if it was the map, it just gave you, Pierce Lane and Western Ave is actually supplied off of Valley Road. If we, are we going down and upgraded the mains and services on Valley Road, the section left to be done would be Western Ave and Pierce Lane, there's about seven customers off of that main. What we'd like to do is come in off of North Street, straight in from Pierce Street, Pierce Lane, I'm sorry, and then come down Western Ave, have a separate feeder, and in order for us to do that, we would need an easement, like Jackie was saying, these are private, Western Ave and Pierce Lane are private streets, they're not town accepted streets, so talking to Dan Murray, Tom Connelly, recommending that we obtain an easement and go forward.
And these are not for new services, these are existing services.
Existing services.
So we could abandon the 1955 and 1958 low pressure gas mains in those areas.
Okay, so you're going to do a gas main replacement, basically?
Right, it would be a new polyethylene high pressure main down, the existing mains, from the intersection of Oak Street down to the end of Pierce Lane would be abandoned.
Okay. Do you, do you take those mains out, or just leave them in?
Leave them in place, abandon them in place.
Okay, and then just lay the new ones on top of it, or nearly on top of it?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Any comments or questions of the board? Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
Move to support Article 31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to amend the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Lakeville, which permits Middleborough to provide water services to existing Lakeville customers by adding a new residential customer located at 37 Bridge Street, or act anything thereon. Do we have any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
I understand we're discussing placing on the ballot whether we're going to accept the intermunicipal agreement. Has the intermunicipal agreement been, been completed and accepted by town meeting?
Yes, it has.
It has been?
Yes.
Okay, then you're discussing then the addition of a residential service?
Add in one, one service, 37 Bridge Street.
My recommendation as a former water superintendent is if we have a legal intermunicipal water agreement, there shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fraly.
The town of Lakeville has accepted, has agreed to support this, this article on their end.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Pleasure of the board.
I'd make a motion to support Article 34.
Second.
Motion to support Article 34. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Hearing meetings and licenses. Which I don't seem to have any.
You don't have any?
I don't have any.
You don't?
Wow. All right, so the next item is correspondence. Starting with Mr. Knowlton.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Knowlton.
I just want to note on number four, Comcast continues to their agreements with the town to provide free internet to the schools and the library, and I know that's part of their negotiated contract, but it is well appreciated by the library and by the schools, I'm sure. I wanted to note number six, the spaghetti dinner, it was noted earlier under announcements, but that spaghetti dinner is happening, let's see, when is it here?
October 4th.
October 4th. And I have my tickets already, and I, I hope to see the other selectmen there. A good cause to support the Women's Memorial Edition out here on Town Hall. Number seven is your letter to Representative Oral
Yes.
about the flow, and I just wanted to note that Selectmen Fraly and myself are going to be going on a tour with the representative, and Representative Schmidt through the Nemasket, and taking a look around, and helping them understand the Middleborough point of view on what's happening there.
The, any of the selectmen from
Yes, being joined by some selectmen from Lakeville as well.
From Lakeville, so they can get a better
They're discussing it as we speak.
Are they buying life preservers and
Oh, we got plenty of them.
Yeah, they trust you all right.
Yeah, no one's volunteered to ride with Selectman Fraly yet.
They probably don't want the cement lined life preservers, you know.
Also, just wanted to note number nine, on a more serious note, there has been triple E here in town, a horse, so please, everyone, follow those guidelines. You know, standing water in your yard, you know, take care of that, your screens, make sure they're up to date and don't have holes in them, avoid outdoor activity during peak mosquito hours, long sleeve shirts, long sleeve pants, which is not much of a problem now with the weather changing, but it's, you know, it's not something to fool around with. Use that deet. And that is all I have.
Okay. Mr. Quell?
No, you're going to go last. See what you get for going on a trip. No, you know, no, I stole all my thunder. I'm a ball hog.
I stole all of thunder.
Let's see.
It's a short list.
All right, now I'll get you. Now you're going to get it, all right. In, Mr. Knowlton did mention number four with Comcast, I also wanted to mention on that, in addition to giving the services to the library and the town, that any member of the town who is recently, they have a recently launched Internet Essentials program, so anyone who has the free lunch program can also be eligible for low cost internet, affordable computers, and digital literacy training through Comcast, which I thought was very kind of them as well. You had mentioned mosquitoes. Number eight, we have in here, and about electricity and gas rates going up, it is my understanding that that will not affect our rates, Ms. Crowley is here, perhaps she could reassure us with that?
I'm guessing that this relates to investor-owned utilities, or some of our neighboring utilities?
Yes.
Yes.
A lot of different utilities have either seasonal rates or quarterly adjustments. If they're regulated under the DPU closely, they might have a quarterly adjustment. We've gotten the feedback from our customers that they would really prefer stability, so that we haven't followed that practice, but we also are in this process right now of reducing this rate stabilization account fund, so we set up a budget for 2013, we're within our budget right now, even though energy costs have been rising, we are still within our budget, and we're going to keep rates where they are likely through the end of the winter. We are looking, we are having a rate study, so it may alter the, the design of the rates, but the impact to the customers should be negligible, so.
Good news, thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Fraly?
I'd just make a quick comment on number seven. I had reached out to Representative Oral's office to ask if she'd be interested in going down the Nemasket River and just getting a hands-on approach to it, and she really embraced the idea, she sent in the invitation to Representative Schmidt, who actually represents pre-town, and his interest is the long pond end of the Aswarmsa Pond Complex. So I'd like to thank her office for all her help and support on this, and I think it's going to be quite an informative day, looking forward to it. I certainly hope someone from Lakeville can join us.
That would be good. And relative to that letter, I just wanted to let people know that we had already tried what they have been asking, and that doesn't resolve the problem. As much as you would think it would, it doesn't. Like I said, all it created was mud flats for, what, 60 yards back from the Waram Street Dam and the Dry Fish Ladder, and that's not the issue. And, you know, in, even in my letter, I did comment that, you know, it's the weeds and the sediment, but that's only a piece. There's, there's so many pieces to that complex. A quick email isn't going to cover it, there's, you've got to really do a good study on that, there's, there's water flow problems, there's blockages, and there's weeds, there's rainfall issues, there's, there's all, there's some things you can't control. You can't control the rainfall, you can't control the groundwater, but there has to be a good study of that river done, because of the because of the plain of the river. It's fairly level, it's not, you know, good sharp downturn. And we don't allow motor boats on it to chop up the weeds, so. The weeds grow. And we can't keep any of the agricultural fertilizer out. So, the one question I had on the Comcast's, the amount that they say, the amount of the value of their broadband contribution to Middleborough alone has an annual value of more than 1,2585.5999. I don't know if that's $12,000, or it's $125,000, but they should-
It looks like 12.
Doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. I would say-
Is it 12, or 125,000? You know, it's hard to say. It's probably 12, but it just doesn't look right. I don't know why they went all four decimal points if they did that. It's a very important thing in my mind. So, any, any other comments or questions about our correspondence, sir?
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, I missed one. The MMA Fall Conference, anyone planning on going to that? You guys don't want me going there alone?
I do, I'm going. We can carpool if you want. I've been there many times, nowhere else.
It's a great time. I don't know if it's a great time, but it's a very informative day, if anyone's interested in going.
I may go to, doing something else that night, trying to do something else that day, but I may go to that, just instead.
I think it's still 1, yeah, it's still 1:30, we'll get you home in time.
Well, I wanted to do things early in the day, not late, but-
All right.
I can stay out after 1:30.
All right.
I won't be able to go to that one, but I am planning on going to the one in-
January?
January, the convention in Boston. So.
Yeah.
What about Taunton? You guys going to go to Taunton for the-
It's on my schedule. And I'm also looking for that link, so I can get certified.
Okay.
Whatever it was.
With the ICS 100?
Yes.
I can send it to you if you want.
Please.
You send it?
Yeah, I can forward it.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Mr. Chair?
Yes. Just one more thing. I know that Selectman Fraley and yourself talked about the St. Vincent de Paul's Walk-
Right.
-coming up. And after giving it much thought, I'm going to join you on that walk.
That's great.
So, looking forward to it.
The more feedback the better.
Yes, it should be a good time. Walking, yes.
The running thing. Cuts the tenure on the Board of Selectmen.
What was the date on that again?
I believe, yes.
Next Saturday.
Sunday.
Sunday.
Okay.
October Sunday, the sixth?
October, yeah.
Sixth.
No, no, 29.
29, September 29.
Okay.
It's this Sunday.
What, do we have to retrain you? We put you on a cruise and that's it?
No, you said next, that's this, that's this next one coming, okay. Thank you.
Any other business? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?